Whether I'm going to stay at Park Lane or somewhere else.
This meeting, order. You're here with the father. Thank you for this day in the city in which we live. Guys, this afternoon as we have our discussion, making your decisions. Great thing. I'm in. This is a special call meeting of the Newnan City Council, four o'clock on Tuesday, March 28, 2023. The purpose of this meeting today is to just have a work session, just general discussion about our project down at 57 East. And I'm going to open it up, I guess, in the beginning with Mr. Phillips to see if he has any comments. And then at that point, I'll introduce Bill Johnston, who is with Stevens, who many of you know Bill. He, I don't want to say Bill's an older guy, but he's been around a while, been down in these woods.
That's true.
With us on bonding, with Nuneon Utilities on bonding and with other entities in and around. My point is, he knows us, he knows Nuneon, he knows who we are and our ability to pay and repay. And Bill, we welcome you today and introduce you here in just a second. But Mr. Phillips, do you have any opening?
No, I know. Just for the resident discussion today.
Okay.
Up any way I can.
All right. Mr. Johnston, we will turn it over to you. You do have a packet at your desk.
I do, I do.
And.
Can everyone hear me?
The purpose of asking Mr. Johnston to be here today was to step through some of the hows. And to be able to bring the council and myself up to speed on what that current market looks like, the financial side of this. So this is not about the what, although the what's important because it drives a good bit of the how. But it's not about the apartments or the townhomes or the conference center or the hotel fees or whatever it is, retail or office. It's about how you would step through under different scenarios, the money part of the project.
Sure.
And that's Bill's expertise, and I appreciate you being here.
Well, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. I am probably one of the older guys, but I'm certainly high mileage. I can assure you of that as much as I've traveled around the state. I've done quite a bit with Nuneon, Nuneon Utilities, assisted with your cable TV system initially. Throughout that entire process, helped sell it and helped consolidate the hospital, if you remember that. And look where you are today with the bond.
We do know that. Yeah, forty-three million dollars worth of remember.
And the mayor called me and we got it done in fifty-three days. I remember that very well.
Me too.
So anyway, what the mayor and Cletus have asked me to do is exactly what he described. Put together really some approaches to how to finance your project. This is not what you're going to do. Y'all have to decide that. You've been elected to do that and you will do that over time. I've seen, read everything publicly available about it, gone through your financials. I'm familiar with what you are financially, but I've been through your recent financials, been through your budget documents, been through all the project documents to date, but y'all still have a lot to decide on that.
Right, and that is, that's important for everyone to know that we did turn over our private side documents that were provided to us, to Mr. Johnston. They are a matter of public record, so he is privy to all of that information. He's not just coming to this.
The vast majority of it I got in the public domain.
Right, sure.
Off your website and off some other, you know, services. So it's in the public domain. Page two, I have a handout plus on the screen. How do you pay for your project? I know in the past, and this goes against my grain since I do bond issues, but y'all like to pay cash for everything. That is clearly an option. We'll discuss that. Each of these bullet points we have in detail in the book. General obligation bonds, special purpose general obligation bonds, SPOs bonds, intergovernmental contract revenue bonds. I've made a career off those things, literally, and you can do so much with those. Urban redevelopment agency bonds and tax allocation districts. Those are, the tax allocation districts, I have a kind of an extended piece in the back in case there's, there are questions about it. But I'm seeing more and more of TADs in Georgia. I mean, you just are. And we'll get into the details of that, but you hear a lot about them. It's a, it's a good financing vehicle. I'm not pushing one over the other. I'm just providing information. But let's go into the cash section, page three. There we go. What do you do with cash? Utilize accumulated cash on hand and any excess cash that you have generated through operations and other sources that you have available. Per year 2020, again, this is public domain information, so. Per year 2020 audit, your general fund cash and cash equivalents, what's been invested is what that means. The number then was twenty-five million, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars. In checking internally, the approximate amount of cash you have on, you had on hand as in that same general fund in cash and cash equivalents, February 28th was right around twenty million, five hundred thousand dollars. You have some restrictions on that. They're good restrictions. The city has set as a financial policy, and this helps with your overall city's bond rating, which in this case, you have a fund balance policy reserve, which is, which consists of fifty percent of the budgeted unassigned fund balance each year. Okay, why do you do that? Well, one, you want to have, for operating purposes, really as much cash as necessary to carry the city in case there's some fall off in revenues or you can't collect taxes or whatever it may be. You have more than enough cash to get you through any troubled times. So you've set that as a policy. The world knows it and you follow it. You, that has helped you and helped the city receive a double A, I think a double A one, but you have a double A two bond rating, which is very high, very, very high. And so this helps you achieve that. Why is a bond rating important? Because when you ultimately do go to the market or you do borrow from a private entity, they will look at that rating on your ability to repay. The better it is, the lower your interest cost and the less expensive it is. So that's the basis for that. So. Your, in your budgeted unassigned fund balance is estimated to be twenty-seven million, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. The required reserve that you will have coming out of that will be thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So of the twenty million, five hundred thousand dollars you have in cash, thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand of it is in reserve. You can't spend it. Or you don't, you've said to yourself, we're not going to spend it. So that really only leaves, out of cash on hand, six million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars towards that or any other project, unless you raise other money, sell some property, whatever it may be. So the twenty million, five hundred thousand dollars isn't fully available to you. Now, you can change that policy. You cannot pay attention to the policy and spend it anyway. I wouldn't recommend that, by the way, but you could do that. So cash is available up to six million seven. Okay? You could issue general obligation bonds. Okay? General obligation bonds in Georgia and any other state for that matter can be issued by city, county or school district and are backed by its ad valorem taxing power, and this is the critical part, the full faith and credit of the issuer. You're on the hook. Okay, you're on the hook. If you don't have cash, this is an extreme. If you don't have cash, you run out of cash for some reason, and you have outstanding GO bonds. Bondholders can send out a special tax bill to get their debt service payment. It's strong. Okay? A referendum is required in Georgia for that. General obligation debt of Georgia cannot exceed thirty years. Typically, you see, you know, twenty-year issues, but you can go thirty. Total GO debt cannot exceed ten percent of the total assessed property that taxable value in your entity. So in 2021, the city's assessed value of taxable property was one billion, seven hundred eighty-two million dollars. That's a lot. And therefore, your GO bond limit, this is a big number, a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. You'd have to go to the voters to get that, and you'd have to pay it back, but you could issue that much in GO bonds. It's a lot. So there's that number. But you, this type of financing can do whatever you want to do, up to a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. Okay? All right, the next approach is special purpose local option sales tax, general obligation bonds. Okay? Instead of your, the full faith and credit of the community that's paying it back, it's that special purpose local option sales tax stream that's coming in to pay those bonds off. Okay? It's become a pretty popular method of financing, especially with school systems. It always requires a rep, the SPOs requires a referendum, as does the bond issue that would be issued associated with that SPOs. There, the SPOs is allowed for a term of five or six years. A lot of SPOs are done pay-as-you-go. You do see a lot of bonds that come out of them as well, but, but, you know, it's a mixed bag there. Coeida County, Nuneon and other cities within Coeida County did approve in 2017 a six-year SPOs for a hundred and forty million dollars. And it was to begin January first, 2019. It will expire 2024. So it's not really readily available right now to you. Now, you know, as planning goes on and it stretches on a few years, you may want to, some of the projects, and I don't know what the project list is, may qualify for a SPOs. You may want to put that on a ballot, whatever it may be. It's an approach. It's something to toolbox. Okay, what did you do, just as a point of reference in 2019? You're, you got, the city of Nuneon got a hundred and forty million dollars, excuse me, that's not correct. Got twenty-six point nine four percent of a hundred and forty million. I bet you would like to get that hundred and forty million. For streets, drainage, sidewalks and equipment, fifteen million. Public safety, three point two five million. Parks, trails, leisure service facilities, fourteen million. Information systems, Nuneon Utilities got three point six million. Your total, based on the referendum that I found, was thirty-six million, forty-nine thousand dollars. Okay? Inter-governmental contract revenue bonds. As I said, I've made a career off these without question. And the key to these types of bonds, and what you're doing is this. You find an authority in a city or county that is broad enough to do the type of project that you want. That's the key to them. Is that, does that authority in its, in its establishment, in the project description, does it fit with what you're trying to finance? Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. That's, that's where the art is. You've got to shoehorn it in there sometimes. You issue revenue bonds out of that appropriate authority and the city or county or school board signs an intergovernmental contract from that body to that authority. They're often called backdoor GOs. Okay? The effect is the full faith and credit of that entity is guaranteeing those bonds. Okay? It doesn't count against your GO debt limit. It doesn't require a referendum. Those are critical things. And are typically faster too, by the way, to do the GOs. Yes, sir?
Wouldn't the rate be a little higher on that?
Slightly, slightly. I'd say five to ten basis points. A hundred basis points is one percent, so it's not much. Not much. I'd say five to ten basis points, so it's a little more expensive, but it is quicker. With GOs, you only have, you can only vote it twice a year. Okay? With, with intergovernmental contract revenue bonds, you can do them anytime. So. But again, the, the power of that authority, you very often have to dig into that to find out what's broad enough to use, and that's the critical. And I've done some research. I mean, I know Nuneon pretty well. And so I went in and also looked at the authorities that you have. I think these three work. Cletus pointed out the downtown development authority. That may or may not work. We'd have to go back and look at that, the powers of that particular authority, and I didn't have access to that. But I know these authorities, the Coeida County Development Authority is one we used to do the cable TV system several years ago. It's pretty broad, pretty broad. Coeida County has a public facilities authority that they established two or three years ago. You are allowed to use it. You can finance pretty much anything out of it. But it's controlled by the county. You'd have to get their permission to use it. Okay? The city of Nuneon has something called an urban redevelopment agency, and that is specifically to redevelop the type of property you're talking about here. It's very broad. It is for the purposes of redeveloping blighted areas. I hate to use that word, but that's in the legislation, so. Well, it is.
Do interest rates seem to fluctuate between the different authorities?
No, no.
Okay, it's all based on creditworthiness?
Creditworthiness of the issuer. But no, yeah, it doesn't make any difference with any one of those authorities. It's, in your case, it's a political decision. It's a, it's a, what's the easiest thing for the city. But from a dollar point of view, you could use any one of these if they qualify. Okay? But you, right now, you have in control, the city controls, the Nuneon Urban Redevelopment Agency. Out of that, they're a little different in that you can do redevelopment projects, but you can also do governmental projects out of these redevelopment authorities. So if you wanted to have a governmental project or put a governmental building on that facility, you could use that authority. That's a little different than downtown development authorities and regular development authorities. You can't finance, that's the real distinction. You can't finance governmental types of projects with those. Okay? All right, urban redevelopment authority. And I'm seeing more and more of these. I've done Sugar Hill, Brassleton, quite a number of other places, and I'm seeing more and more of these. The cities and counties have powers to undertake redevelopment projects. You have to have a redevelopment plan. Okay? Formal plan, you know, what's, what's the area? What are you going to do? That has to be put together first. Again, you can do governmental buildings. You have one. It's properly registered. I checked with the state. It's, yours exists. It's up to date. You can use it tomorrow. It's up to you. This is a pretty good fit for what you're looking to do. Tax allocation district. I'm seeing more and more and more of these. And I've got a list in the back. I'll show you where, they pop up all over the place. The thing about tax allocation districts, however, is you have to specifically get, once you define an area, and I'll talk about the mechanics in a minute. Once you define the, the tax allocation district area and what you're going to do, you have to go to the legislature first and get that TAD approved. Okay? Then you have to have a referendum. Okay? To get it approved by the local folks. So there are a couple of big steps. You also have to get.
So could I ask, who participates in the referendum? Only the people in the district?
Yes. Yes.
So the registered voters in the district, obviously?
Are you talking about the big district or your district, specific district?
The TAD district.
Yeah, okay.
TAD district.
So if there's nobody living in that district, how do you do?
I don't know.
He's hitting me to the point.
I don't know the answer to that, and I'll find it.
I knew, I knew it was being used, and I understand. I never thought of it that way, but if you had a specific project, there was.
Well, the ones I have done recently in Nuneon, in St. Mary's and Kingsland, they were established. They're pretty broad areas because, you know, most, in those situations, most of the city is in the TAD, but they're focusing the money on a smaller district. So if you wanted to include the entire, and there's a limitation there. You could, the area that you pick to be in the TAD can only be ten percent of the assessed property value of your entire community. So you can't pick the whole city and then, you know, take the increment off the entire city to put it in one area. But you, but you could pick ten percent of the area, vote on that, and then.
So you'd pick the surrounding property, all this mobile as property?
Yeah, whatever you think is correct. That's going to take some more digging. But, but the thing I found with, with TADs is, and frankly, I'm coming up to speed on a lot of these. This is not something, and I've told the mayor and Cletus this. We've been called in on TAD deals because the communities will go set them up. You know, they'll, they'll have a third party come in and estimate the revenues, and then they'll need to issue debt, and nobody knows how to issue the debt on them. And we've done an extensive amount of work there and helped them issue the debt. And, and here's a big, an interesting point. If you're, the city of Atlanta has ten of these things at least. Okay? If you're in a big city like Atlanta, inside the perimeter, you can issue TAD bonds without an intergovernmental contract. Okay? Because the districts are so dense, they're so large, they can support themselves. Okay? You step outside the perimeter of the city of Atlanta, that's not the case. You go to Dalton, St. Mary's, wherever, outside the perimeter, those require a backup general obligation pledge of that city or county. Okay? So you're on the hook still. So you're on the hook still.
Right.
Now, so the first source of revenue is that TAD increment, but there's a backup source. To sell that debt, either privately place it, or in the public markets, is requiring that backup.
One second. Page ten, about this.
Yeah.
Taking my thoughts.
Yep, go on.
Okay. What I'm seeing around the state is, you know, they're being done for the redevelopment of shopping centers that have, you know, or zombie shopping centers, or, in St. Mary's instance, they have a big two-thousand acre piece of forest land that's owned by Randi that they want to develop. It's, it's exit one, okay? And it's a two-thousand acre swath of woods that they want to redevelop, and they're going to. Um, Kingsland wants to redevelop exit two. There's a one landowner that wants to do a big development there, and so, um, but, but it's usually smaller projects, you know, infill sorts of things, and we're just on the very front end of these things, frankly, but they're, they're gaining traction pretty fast, so... Um, got to have public hearings. The area for redevelopment, as I said, cannot exceed ten percent of the total tax digest. The adoption of redevelopment plan must be by the city, county, and school district. So you're taking, if you do a TAD, and, um, you define it, and you want to get, you, you invest that money into the project, I'll show you that in a minute. The increment of that district that you're using to pay debt is coming from the city, in this case, the county, and the school district, to the extent they go along. They may not go along, okay? Atlanta's been in a big fuss with Indicab County, with, with the school system, they don't want to have anything to do with them. Or they only want to do a partial contribution, but, but some communities see that, you know, that development area is so important that they'll throw their increment in as well, okay? That's, that's a big holdup in some cases there. Let's, let's flip over to the tax increment, and I'm not pushing one over the other, by the way, I'm, I'm just trying to provide some background on these things. This is page thirteen. Started in California in nineteen fifty-two. Today, all fifty states and the District of Columbia have, um, tax increment financing laws, or tax allocation district laws on the books. We do, we've had it since eighty-five. Um, you know, you're setting the ba, a property base, you're freezing a tax base, you invest that money into the redevelopment. Let's flip, let me flip to page fourteen. Who has them in Georgia? And, and I've looked, I find a new one every day that's not on this list, by the way. I, I mean, look at, look at how many places have TADs. I mean, they've just been popping up all over the place. Atlanta has ten, Gwinnett five. You know, I got a call yesterday to go to Villarica for one they're doing, so, I mean, they're, they're, they're there, they're growing, they're, you know, you're gonna see more and more and more of those. Here's really what a TAD's all about, right here. Here, this is the crux of it. And there's a three-way test. You have a blighted or distressed area, a deteriorating area, um, and an area with inadequate infrastructure, and, and the private sector is not coming in to cure any of those things. The community is saying, we've got to do something about it, we're willing to put money behind it, and this is a method to do just that. Okay? Okay. All right, I'm gonna skip to page seventeen. This is really, in my view, here we go. Here's, here's really, if, where would you use a TAD? But for the TAD, development would not occur in that area. But for, you're putting the front-end money to build out infrastructure, to build out roads, to build out whatever is needed for the private sector to come in and, and put their piece into it. Yours is the front-end money to do it, it can be cash, whatever it is, but it can be financed, too. Okay? Columbus has a TAD, theirs is pay-as-you-go. They've been collecting this for a lot, a long time. You come to them, saying, I've got this project, it, it passes muster or not. If it does, they give you a certain amount of money, but it's, it's cash. They've collected that over time, they haven't financed anything. A lot of others have done some financing, but they have not, so that's an interesting approach.
Got a question, I'd like to-
Yes, sir.
How long have they, how long have they been collecting?
Several years. Theirs is one of the longer ones, but I don't know how long.
Eight, eighteen?
Eight to ten years, at least, yeah. They, so they have a backlog of money they've collected. Uh, eighteen. This is, this is schematically what you are doing here, okay? You create a TAD, a, a district, um, and it can go quite some period of time, you know, one year, five years, twenty years. And so you freeze the tax base in that district, it stays flat, you're still collecting it, but it stays flat. You take a certain amount of money, plug it into the project, the infrastructure of the project, and, and then the outside money comes in. And then the, the, let me get this thing over here, here we go, right here. This area right here, that's the growth of the digest. That money right there, for whatever period of time you've set that TAD up, that money is used to pay the debt, or, or build out other things within that tax district, okay? At the end of twenty years, if that's the, the time, it ends. And then the city, county, and school board get the higher taxes on the whole project at that point. But in the interim, all that growth is going to the project.
You're creating a tax base that didn't exist, and that, and that money-
You got it.
-build it, and then you later on recover.
You got it. That's it. That's the whole thing. So, and I've got some information in the market, if you're interested.
So, so tell us, every, every piece of property that's inside the TAD is frozen?
Yeah.
Or just the project property?
Um, no, inside, whatever that overall tac, TAD district is, it can be outside the area being redeveloped, too.
So regardless of the county assess, tax assessor coming in and doing a reassessment of taxes, and if you're in that TAD district, his, his, her assessment would not-
Is frozen.
Would not apply.
The reassessment that does grow, the frozen piece you, you get, it's frozen. The growth part of it goes back towards the project.
It still grows.
It's still growing, it's still improving in value, hopefully.
We're frozen at the day you-
But you're frozen at whatever that base level is.
And is it just us that's frozen, or the other tax entities?
All three.
All three?
If they go along.
But they wouldn't have gotten any extra if you hadn't done it directly?
That's right. You got it. That's exactly right. Yeah, and, and that's the way you have to look at it, okay? But for the investment that you're doing, nothing's gonna happen there. And yours is the, the hardest money, yours is the front-end money to, to get it going, okay? Nobody else is gonna do it. You, you put in the roads, you put in water, wastewater, all the other stuff, fire station, whatever is needed there, and then it starts.
And you issue, you could issue debt-
You could.
-for that infrastructure, and if the TAD rebates-
The TAD pays it back.
Pays that back, over a period.
Now, in this instance, let me go back to that redevelopment agency exists, it seems to me, as an outside finance person, that that's a better fit for what you're trying to do.
The development agency-
The urban redevelopment agency thing.
True.
You control it, it exists, it finances the redevelopment projects, it can finance the gover, if there's a governmental piece in there, you can do that, too. Um, it covers all the bases. You don't have, you don't have any more steps to do, except figure out what you want to do, cost it out, and, and act on it. You've got a, you've got a vehicle right there. But I, I, again, the TAD thing, you're gonna hear and see more about it, it isn't just me talking about it, it's, it's, it's gonna happen at some point in time, but, but there are a lot of steps to it.
Is the, 'cause I don't know whether you're getting to it or not in the next section, but, um, between the tax allocation district and the urban redevelopment authority, um, or a combination thereof, what would you think is the best option for us?
I think for you, based on what I know about the city, over a very long period of time, the urban redevelopment agency is probably the best route. Okay? Let me back up and give you my opinion, okay? You have been out to the public and requested from a third party, um, an analysis of what you want built in that district. It's come back, not a lot of people have raised their hands and said, yeah, we're gonna do that, or we want to do that. Y'all haven't made your mind up yet. To get what you want to put in that district, you're gonna have to take more control of that project, and probably do it yourself, instead of having a third, you may bring in a third party to build certain portions of it, but for you to get what you want, you're probably gonna have to take control of it. I've got a story to tell you. The mayor's heard it, you have not. You have something special here. I've known it for a long time, you know it, but you live here and you probably forget about it somewhat. My wife and I were in England last summer, and we met a lady on a tour who we befriended and took a taxi on this tour. She's from California, she's a little bit younger than me, retired schoolteacher, recently widowed, two boys in the service, one at Fort Gordon, one at Fort Benning. She's been to Georgia. In our conversation, she said, I'm moving to Georgia. Tired of California, taxes are too high, it's gotten crazy, I want to be near my boys. Okay? Where are you gonna move in Georgia? I was expecting her to say Augusta in Columbia. No, I'm moving to Noonan, Georgia. How about that? Why are you going to Noonan? Great town, why'd you pick Noonan? Well, I did my research, went to La Grange, and a bunch of other places. I like the people, quaint community, spent the night in a hotel, don't know which one. People couldn't have been nicer, like the downtown area, like the healthcare services. This is a total stranger, moving to Noonan, Georgia, for the things I just talked about. You've got something here that, that you need to develop further, and I think you're gonna have to take charge of it yourself.
Thank you for that.
Okay?
Appreciate the comment.
All right. If there are any questions, I'll try and answer.
I do have some other questions, 'cause the, um-
Sure.
The Urban Redevelopment Authority, um, uh, I will just say that I was at the very beginning of that process.
Okay.
Um, because the point of it was for us to look at ways that we could develop, um, redevelop some of our neighborhoods.
Sure, sure.
Um, having them as, specifically focusing on housing.
Sure.
Affordable housing, at that. So, of course, you know, there's a bit of me that wants to make sure that we don't get off mission and give them something that's not necessarily lining up with that, and to protect that mission, because they've got a lot going on. They've been tasked with spending Arco money on housing, they've been asked, um, and probably will be asked to be involved in that, um, housing money that we're supposed to get from HUD, um, as a congressionally directed spending. And so, um, and this may be more directed towards our city manager and city attorney, um, is, how do we protect that and do this at the same time? Um, we do have Andrew Moody now, who's the liaison, who's with housing and all of that. I'm thinking, just off the top of my head, I'm like, is there a way for us to expand that board and create committees on it, where one stays on housing, one stays on this project, or?
Honestly, I don't think that's necessary. I think what's gonna happen, there is gonna be a lift for the Urban Redevelopment Agency at the front, if you were to decide to go that route, 'cause we gotta go through and amend our urban redevelopment plan, amend the map, et cetera, the, so that is work on the front end, but once that process happens, and I don't imagine there's gonna be a lot of work, Haskins agreed with me, he knows a lot about this. They're the vehicle, we don't worry about it, but the upfront work.
It's, it's a lot like, and stop me if I'm wrong here, but it's-
Hospital?
Pardon me? The hospital. The, Reagan and I both are on the Downtown Development Authority. That money came through, flowed through the Downtown Development Authority, it didn't create any workload, other than signing some papers, the money was there, it got funded once a month, we had an allocation, the financial report, as the money got paid, we had nothing to do with the project itself, so, no, it would not distract them from the-
Workload here.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Exactly. There was workload there with that. Mr. Craig, you drove that project.
Yes, sir.
And everyone, and a lot of people, but, but that's-
Yep.
It doesn't create that workload, and, and more importantly, it doesn't create that distraction.
Right.
That you're worried about.
Yep, okay.
Other questions? Again, this was, uh, bringing up the speed on the how and not the what, um, the what is still to be determined, and so is the how. I mean, obviously, we've got some options there, just like, this is just like, you know, you go out to buy a house, you're gonna search for that house, and you're gonna search for the best financing for the house, too. Uh, and whether that's a line of credit, or whatever it is, uh, or a thirty-year mortgage, you're gonna pick what's best for you, and that's, that's a simple analogy, but I mean, that's, that's what we're doing. This is much more complex, of course.
Yeah.
But, this is, this is what we wanted to do today, we, um, we've got plenty of time here, if anybody's got any questions or comments about where we are, I think, you know, one thing we'll see is this will be put on our retreat agenda, uh, for, for, for discussion and deeper discussion of what we're, where we're headed. Anyone?
I guess what I'm hearing, by bottom line, it, to me, it's, we've got multiple avenues for, for, for the financial piece. The big deal now is, is the what, and until we get to that, so, what dollar value is involved, who's involved, what the upfront costs are, et cetera, so we kind of have a piece, a little bit of a vision with it, but at the same time, we really have, based upon what we've discussed or not discussed, don't have a clear vision as to what we want to do with that piece of property. So now, it's whatever we come up with, it's just a matter of picking the pieces to, to fund the project. So that's gonna be very important for us.
Right. I do have a question, Mr. Johnson, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna make sure. The, the authority, if we, if we chose the Urban Redevelopment Authority, the, the bonding, whatever money was created through that authority, they do make a fee off of providing those services, is that not correct?
They do.
So that, that's something they keep, that it's-
If, uh, excellent question. Some authorities, um, some authorities charge a fee, some do not.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Uh, my experience is, um, if it's for a local pri, if the city or county's going through that authority, they often waive the fee, okay? Uh, not in every case, okay? So that's a individual authority or agency decision, but, uh, i- in most cases, that if, you know, if the cities go into, you know, the public service authority, whatever it is, they, as a matter of courtesy, very often waive the fee, but they don't have to.
Right, okay.
Okay? But let me also say about your project and the finances, the city's finances are in really good shape, and you would probably be very surprised at how much money you could borrow, and how quickly you could borrow it. And so I don't think you're gonna be constrained dollar-wise with your creditworthiness, okay? So- Okay, so pick wisely, because you could, you could spend a lot of money very quickly, and the market will let you do it. They'll, they'll let you borrow as much as you want.
Bill, thank you for those comments, and I agree with you that we need to control this or drive this. I've dealt with you for probably 30 years, and you've done a superb job always for the city. And I look at this project, that it has to be, we have to look at it long-term, not so much short-term, but long-term and sustainability down the road.
The St. Mary's project I'm working on has been long and drawn out. It's taken a long, long time to get that deal done, but it's city-driven. City-driven. And the city's willing to make the investments, and it's gonna take off. I can tell you, there's pent-up demand like you've never seen. Across the road, the project for Kingsland is not city-driven. It's, it's property owner-developer-driven. And the city, you know, they've got the vision, they've got the property, and they want the city to do a TAD and put, you know, all this money into their property. And, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna improve the area, improve the community and all that, but it's not driven by the city. Okay, so there is a distinct difference. And, but for you to get what you want, you've just taken a stab at getting a private entity to do what you want. And I don't think they did. I don't know them, and, you know, I've read the plan, that sort of thing, but I didn't detect in reading the paper and reading other news services, that that's quite it. Okay? Thank you.
One quick question. I stepped in late, so I don't need you to rehash everything. I don't want you to do all that. Could you just give me the Reader's Digest version, if you will, of the TAD funding source for the bond?
Okay.
I'm not sorry, I'm sorry, not the TAD, but the.
Urban Redevelopment Agency.
Yep.
An urban redevelopment agency is like any other authority. Standalone legal entity that has the authority to issue bonds. Its purpose is to redevelop a defined area that you, city, county, whoever, has defined as needing to be redeveloped. Unfortunately, in the legislation, they call it a blighted area. So some communities, it's, that are like that, that you define a certain area as blighted. But that's in the legislation, and that's what you got. And so you, right now, have a defined urban redevelopment area. And Cleese was correct, you're probably gonna have to go in and make some modifications and expand or redirect some of the area, but you can do that in a modification of the plan pretty easily. But that authority is specifically set up to redevelop areas that need to be redeveloped, and it's a good vehicle to let a community do that. The, the distinct difference between that and a downtown development authority or a industrial development authority is the fact that you specifically can not only finance redevelopment projects, but you can do governmental projects. You know, if you want to put a governmental building over there, you could and finance it through that authority.
So how, how does, over time, you know, 20, 30 years, whatever it takes, how is that bond repaid?
The bond can be repaid a couple of ways. The bonds can be sold in the public markets or placed in the private markets. We're indifferent. We're looking for the best terms for an issuer and the best interest rate. And they vary from time to time. You, whichever is the least expensive, you put together a bond issue, you place it or sell it. The, the bondholders get, keep the bonds for whatever period of time you want to finance it. You take the proceeds and you plug it into the project, whatever it is you decide, you've decided to do. The money's kept in a project account. It's not commingled with other city accounts. It's used just for that project, not commingled. Can only be used for that. Okay? If there's any money left over, you take the difference and you change the project and do something else, or you pay debt service with it. The city pays the debt service from any available means you have, either through existing taxes, the increased taxes in that district, or any other area in the city. But the city is paying that debt service over whatever period of time you want to finance it.
And that allows for like a creation of a TAD or something like that?
TAD is, is more confined, more specific. Okay? With Urban Redevelopment Agency, you're, you're looking at the entire city, if you want. I mean, the entire full faith and credit of the entire city is pledged to repay that debt. Okay? Thank you.
Might have just more of a statement, I guess, from, with regards to all this is, you seem to be fairly optimistic as to what the future holds, and there's no, I mean, there's risk
Sure.
in all that, that we're doing here. And as you look into your crystal ball down the road with the way things are, and depending on who you read on what given day, there's a lot of volatility in the market as well as taking on projects of this side and financing and really could be a burden on the city. What is your, what is your opinion or response to that?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing a dramatic rise in interest rates because of inflation, because what the Federal Reserve has done, what they needed to do. So refundings in my industry, the refunding of old bond issues or old debt at lower interest rates, that's over with for a while. That's about 25 to 30% of what I do. That's done for a while, quite a while. So all I'm seeing is new money projects, or some restructurings for different reasons. Those new money projects, doing the University of Georgia Athletic Association project. Let me tell you, you win two national championships, you can do whatever you want to do. And they have some big plans, I promise you. Stuff like that, that's, that's fun stuff. But I have a lot of communities that are faced economically with the same thing you're faced with. The public is demanding new infrastructure downtown Sugar Hill. New, new city hall, new downtown, new parking decks, new amphitheater. And it didn't stop them. They're just, they build a piece, they catch up, another piece is coming in. I'm seeing it all over the place. The demand is coming from the public that, that they want their communities to do stuff, whatever it is. You know, new housing, new roads, new water and wastewater access for the new housing. That isn't slowing down, and I've been totally amazed by that. And inflation has certainly taken a hit on the cost of projects. I mean, it's really had an impact there. But I'm not seeing new money projects slow down. I'm frankly surprised at the number of projects we're seeing and doing and the calls I get every day. Now, there are people I've worked with for a very long time.
Sure.
And, you know, their project is coming to fruition, and I'll get a call. And some of them aren't small projects anymore. And, you know, you see, well, this not-so-big city, not you, but other cities, doing some pretty big projects. And the, and you, you go to public meetings, and you expect, well, maybe somebody in the community doesn't want it. That's not necessarily the case. You may have one or two people against you, but the rest of the community's all for it.
Do they clearly understand how they, how it's gonna be financed and repaid, versus just a?
Some do, some don't. Some do, some don't. Let me give you an example. Beaufort, Georgia. Pretty successful city. They built an 85 million, this is all public record. I'm not speaking out of school here. They built an $85 million high school. Okay? They've done it with two bond issues. The public rallies around that school, and it's the center of the school. They've had two bond issues to support that, two, okay? About $40 million apiece. The first bond issue, three people voted against the bond issue in the city. Three people voted against it.
Three people?
Three people. The second bond issue, five people voted against it, out of, you know, a couple of thousand people that voted. And I tease them, they're out looking for those three or five people that didn't vote for it. But, but the demand, I mean, the community's all for that school. That's what they put the resources in, and so the, yeah, they're generally for it. Now, if they're not, you'll hear about it. You'll hear about it. You know, in Atlanta, we're looking at building a big new jail. You know, what's that gonna cost?
Just what we need.
So, those sorts of things.
So kind of, just a quick follow-up to that.
Sure.
And kind of follow-up to that question is, with people understanding, hopefully, that they're giving them, they're taxing themselves, they're increasing their tax on themselves, and a lot of people are, you know, fleeing the high-tax areas.
Sure.
Do you see any turnoff people, maybe like that lady in your story, not locating here because we are having, you know, higher taxes, kind of pushing the Fulton County, Atlanta, if you will, higher taxes? Because other, other areas do have other taxes that we don't have here.
Yeah, I don't see, well, I can tell you, the lady in California, I can tell you why she's moving. Their rate's a lot higher than ours, and it isn't gonna get any better. So she's happy to get out of that. I mean, if, if I see any movement within the Georgia, it's out of the city of Atlanta into Noonan, you know, Fayetteville, places like that, Athens, where the taxes are low, a little bit lower. But that's the kind of migration that I'm seeing. But I'm not seeing people, not that many people, some retirees going to Florida out of that living in Georgia. But, you know, the migration is, I mean, a lot of people are staying in state.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, any comments from council? Again, this is ongoing discussion. This is just one of many opportunities we're gonna have until we settle on the how and the what and strike a compromise with everyone on council with what we're gonna, gonna see there.
Right, well, I think we have, we have a steep cliff to, to climb with all this. I'm encouraged to hear, I was just gonna ask you, with all you GA graduates up here, do we get any type of break, any type of financing?
I think so.
No, okay, all right, just curious. I think we're gonna have to start going through and assemble the plan and like, what do we want? What do we don't want? Kind of line item veto things and begin to whittle down as to what this thing's gonna look like. It's, I'm very encouraged at the fact of where we stand as a community, as a, as a city. We've been very confident in our financial position. That being said, this project must generate the revenue that's gonna, that's gonna pay for it, which is really gonna, we're have to broaden our view on what we want or possibly don't want and what, what fits and what's gonna generate the people to come in, what's gonna generate the buzz, everything that we've heard. When you go through the East Broad Due Diligence Report and also this great report right here, there's a lot of things that can narrow us down really fairly quickly. And there may be some happy campers, might not be so happy campers in, in the community as to what, what goes in there. But overall, it's really, particularly when we're talking about something 20 to 30 years possibly being financed, we've got to make sure. So I'm, where I'm at at this moment, we've, okay, we got the financial piece. Basically, what I hear, we can do whatever we want to do. Now, it's like, how much do we want to spend, how we want to finance it, and what needs to go in that project? And I'm kind of like ready to start at what we want and what we don't want and start whittling, and, or is that something we want, gonna wait for the retreat? That would be my.
Yeah. Council, other comments we're going with?
Well, I, I like what I hear from Bill, and I agree. I think we need to start looking at what we want and what we don't want. Start with it. So we have time set aside to do that tonight, or?
Not really. I'm not prepared to start. We didn't bring any structure here tonight to be able to start.
No, you got, you got a lot of structure.
But I, I think.
Well, it's gonna have to be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I think it's a good idea to do this, the retreat. And again, I, I look at sustainability long-term.
Well, I have another, another comment. I think Cleese sent out an email to us with regarding, he and I went over to Trilis over there in Fayetteville. And I would suggest strongly that prior to going to for the retreat, that each one take time, either go with a couple people and take a look at that as to the sheer possibilities, although we don't have the acreage, of what could be. And I think I responded to his email. I think in order, part of our due diligence, we've got to really see what's out there. And I think that is the closest thing, and even going into downtown Fayetteville, into their new city hall and what's behind their city hall, kind of gives us an idea. Kind of might, what I feel, will broaden our scope of what we really can do and as far as architecture and just some really unique ideas that could be available to us. And then it boils down to how much we want to spend. But there's a, it's well worth the half-hour trip to, to go over there. And so, I want to go again. I think you had mentioned, Cleese, that you could arrange a meeting with the developer, the, or the real estate, the agency there. And I think Rhodes responded. So I'm just encouraging everybody, if we're gonna, as we dig into this, we really got some have, to have some expanded vision.
Agreed.
I think, kind of goes back to, we've had a discussion amongst ourselves, kind of, what is Noonan, what is not Noonan? And I think we need to kind of nail that down a little bit more. Because I would kind of define, what do we want, what do we not want, kind of more basic than even this discussion. I had, I sharked this from some other, somebody else, but not, not a public entity, but kind of like what is Noonan? And kind of, we want it to be, I think, kind of a place to celebrate the area in an authentic way. You know, whatever that means, you know, we can kind of whittle that stuff down, like, you know, what is truly Noonan? What is that? You know, we know what is, not necessarily what we don't want, you know, we don't, but what do we specifically want?
I'm not real sure if we even know what we don't want.
Maybe not. Maybe not.
And there's gonna have to be a process in place to, for us to step through that.
Right, absolutely.
Step through that conversation.
Absolutely.
It can't just be, you know, sitting around talking about it. It's got to be a process.
Absolutely.
So we'll, we'll talk about what that looks like and get that part of the agenda. I mean, it may be a third party that we have to bring in from outside to mediate that process. I'm just thinking, you know, maybe it's not Mr. Phillips or Mr. Kramer, so that they're, they're off the hook. It's not. They're not, but you'll pay for it, right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, they're, so they're not on the hook with their ideas of what they've made.
Right.
There's nothing vested.
They shouldn't be leading this.
Can you refresh my memory on how much data we have gotten from the public? You know, any surveys or anything like that that we can look at again?
We've got all that. It's right in here.
Okay.
Every bit of it.
Which you have, which you should have.
Okay.
Well, make sure everybody gets it again and be.
This one here is a phenomenal book. It's got some great information as to demographics. I mean, the whole thing is laid out as to what we, we are, percentages to people here and incomes, etcetera. So, and also the idea, it kind of duplicates a little bit what's, what's in here as well.
And it's gonna be our job to do our homework, all of us, before our retreat date comes up. So.
Which is why I'm asking for the information now, 'cause I was like, where is it? 'Cause I don't have that copy, I have to get another one.
Oh.
Okay. I thought everything went out electronically.
I put all these.
This was given to us at the last, I think, most recently.
Right.
It was in the box.
Is it in the drop box?
The day after the presentation.
Okay. Can we also put it in everybody's drop box?
Yeah.
I'll have to get a digital copy of it. I think I'll get it right now.
That'd be a big one.
Okay. All right, anything else? We appreciate everybody being here this evening to listen to the process. And more to come. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion second, we adjourn. All those in favor, if you can, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Thank you for being here this evening. We're adjourned. From this meeting, our regular council meeting starts at 6:30.